I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincella.
Here.
Alderman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall. Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Randall's here. So, all the aldermen are present. Roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner. City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Here. Jamie Matrat. Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider. Lee Under Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville.
Here.
and Nissa McCaskill.
Okay, we have Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer, who was on a vacation day today. Jim Sparker is here for Chief Clay, who's tied up this evening. And we've got some on vacation and some off sick. So, I'll just go down the list. Chuck Schaefer, Jim Schneider, Bob Sabo, Gregwitz, Spearman, McCaskill, and Clay were all excused. Like I mentioned, a couple of them do have assistants that are here. With that said, I would ask everyone to please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to remind everyone that we are videotaping as we do each meeting. Please, aldermen, speak into the microphone. Guests who do choose to speak after you're recognized at public participation, step up to the microphone and speak into it. Give your name, and we'll talk about that in just a second. Emergency evacuation, if we had to leave this building for extreme weather or take cover, we would ask you to go down the hallway, cross the lobby, right across from the clerk's office, set of stairs, take you downstairs to the starb shelter. Certainly, the officers will guide you. If we had to leave the building because of smoke or fire, we'd ask that you quietly, cautiously leave through the front of the building, go across the street carefully, and meet in front of the St. Clair County sign so we could try to get account and look around, talk to each other, and make sure the people that you knew were in here have been accounted for. So, just some good advice in those emergency situations. Heaven forbid they ever arise. I'm going to open public participation. Well, we have no public hearings this evening, so I'm going to move to public participation. I will ask, raise your hand, I'll call on you and give your name, and try to keep it to two to three minutes on topics that are prevalent to the city. Who'd like to go first? Yes, ma'am?
Two negative Lillian Schneider, 219 Kansas Avenue. All sewer and trash bills paid with no six-water shut-off notices. My comment is how the aldermen, when they're at committee meetings, can act like children. At the last economical development meeting, the night before the big press conference, the question was asked, is Lillian invited? Boy, the big laugh and chuckles everyone did at Lillian's expense. But who was the great laugh, the great last laugh on and the ones turning red? Let's let the children act like children instead of all city officials for the taxpayers. It's like the little boy that cried wolf. Hear ye, hear ye. Press conference, wow, nothing, as the little boy cried wolf. Tonight, the aldermen will be voting on a new project. When they haven't finished are taking care of what they started with a new TIF and everything out at the shrine. And what has it cost the city and what is it costing extra? This new project is for who and what. Hope this isn't another big secret. If it is, vote no, because you're spending the taxpayers' money that have no right to hear of what's going on, just like the no hotels. I will be an adult and say congratulations now and when they do name the hotels, if it does happen. But this new project, I think the public has a right to know what's going in there, because you will also be increasing the sales tax on things that are bought. Sure, it won't be on food items and stuff like that, but here we go again. The city has the largest sales tax around. So, if you care about your constituents, vote no on this project until we know who and what it is.
Anyone else this evening?
My name's Hal Anabonit. I live at 750 Fort Henry Road in Belleville on the east end. I have a few comments. First, I'd like to just express my extreme disappointment that it's been a year now and we were pushed and rushed, that's what I heard, to get this Missionary Ventures approved for the shrine, and we still don't have a hotel, and we're spending money already to go for a sewer line, and that's, so I'm disappointed. I am disappointed that we don't hold the other end. They hold us hostage, because I was told, we've got to get this approved or they'll go some other place. That's what I heard. And guess what? Well, you know, we got it approved, and we did all these things for them and gave them all that, and they still don't have a hotel, probably because they can't find a hotel that's looking and going, what the hell am I going to do with a hotel on the top of a hill above Centerville? But anyway, my next one is to do with that, too. It's item 11C4. It's a change order for Gonzalez for the sanitary sewer line to Mission Ventures. And I looked down in there, it's a $36,000 change order, and I read through it, and change orders cost money. They cost the taxpayers money. I want to know the details of why. I read, they rerouted it. Who didn't figure this out to start with? Because I can tell you for a fact that change orders cost the taxpayers money. So, somebody should have reviewed this. The right route should have been picked to start with. If it was Gonzalez who picked it, and now they can't go that way, what I was reading in this voluminous document, that it was something to do, it had to be rerouted, because part of it was going to go over the property there. Well, you can run a sewer line through property, but whatever reason, it's taxpayer money. And I would like the details of why and whose fault we have to do a change order. It was the city's fault, because they didn't give the right directions to the engineer, or was it the engineer who drew it up to start with and didn't do all their homework, and now they've got to go back and do resur surveying and reroute it? My next comment is on item 12D. And really, that whole 12 situation of closing Main Street is, 12D is concerning Big Daddy's block party, and they want to close two blocks. Why should we, for a private enterprise that's there to make money for this block party, close a public street that I pay for? That's baloney. That's favoring a business. That's favoring, and that's a public street. This is not a fundraiser. This is not for something else that says it's for their 11th anniversary block party. And they just want to get more people drinking beer, and they want to shut down a public street that belongs to me, a taxpayer. And that's malarkey.
Yes, sir.
You know, it favors one, and they make money. So, you know, and the whole thing about street closures, I started counting, and I gave up at 12. I mean, there's 12 Saturdays that we close some street downtown. That's 25% of the weekends, you know. Doesn't make sense to me. I don't know why we don't just board it up and make it a public, a walkway place.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close public participation. We will move on to, we have no presentations, recognitions, or appointments this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of the city council minutes from the city council meeting of March 7. Do I hear a motion to accept and file? Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Cincella. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Claims, payroll, and dispersments. You see the amounts. We have $2,121,322, and the payroll, that was the dispersments and claims. The payroll's in the amount of $820,905.71. What's your pleasure?
Second motion, claims and payroll and dispersments.
Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Elmore. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a treasurer's report from February 2016, a statement of cash and investment report. What, do I hear a motion to accept and file for audit? Motion by Bittner, second by Pousa. Discussion. All in favor of accepting and filing for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oral reports, economic development, Mr. Cincella.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a professional service contract with Economic Development Resources LLC for a proposed business district located at 6401 West Main Street.
Do I hear a second? Second by, motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Wiggington. Eric, I don't know if you want to say anything for, let me just say this. You, it was in committee. There's been a few things said here today, statements. As you should know, I think most of you know, when you propose a business district, you can't name a, choose, just handpick a developer. You have to provide an RFP process. That's what we've done for every business district, and I think we've got four right now. Is that correct? Five, I'm sorry, I missed one. So, that's the procedure, and we can't say what it is, some of you, but it does involve some proposed, certainly somebody came forward and has a plan that they're no doubt going to fill out the RFP to make some significant improvements at 6401 complex. It's been sitting there for a long time. It's been no secret that that complex has been on our radar screen to target it for some definite facelift and improvement and try to increase its productivity and try to help make it a much stronger anchor in West Belleville. So, that's been on our list, Economic Development Department, and my, as the CEO of the city, it's been on our plan for a long time. We bring before you here tonight, a proposal to start the process, hire Mr. Norber, and start to see if it qualifies for what we believe it will, the criteria to form a business district and to put out the RFP. If we didn't think we were on the right track, we wouldn't be doing this. The developer will pay for the business district, right, Eric?
Yes.
And we'll make it very clear in the RFP, we're not paying for this. So, we have really no risk. If it doesn't go forward, we're no farther than we were all these years it sat in the condition it's in. But I can tell you, I firmly will tell you this. My belief, from what I've been included on thus far, is that this is the right thing to do for West Belleville and for that shopping center area that is in need of a facelift and a major renovation, let's put it that way. So, at this time, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the professional services contract with EDR, and like I said, I'll answer any other questions. Mr. Galetti.
I want to know, as a part of, is the developer going to pay for Mr. Norber's fee?
That's what I said, yes.
Alright.
Eric, correct?
Yes.
He's well, this particular one who's inquired, and everyone that submits an RFP will be told that they must pay for this fee. Mr. Wiggington.
And Mayor, thank you. And, you know, how long can we let these, some of these facilities sit and go vacant? They're not generating any sales tax revenue. They're not helping West Main. They're not helping the neighborhoods. This is not only a good plan, it's a viable plan, and we've had a lot of people contact over the years. We've gone nowhere with this. This is something that we can really, really move forward. It would be very remiss if we passed on this opportunity to fill up a decrepit aging facility, get some new revenue generating businesses in there, and it's going to be tremendous for West Main and all of West Belleville.
It's got a lot of potential. I thank you. Anyone else? I'd ask for a roll call on the motion.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Health and Housing.
We have a low bidder, Schaefer, of excavating in the amount of $57,610 for the demolition of the following properties, 1712 Shields Street, 33 Highwood Court, 500 South Church Street, 2021 Madison Avenue, 124 North 15th, and 523 North Jackson Street. I move, we accept the low bid.
Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Ovian. Any discussion on this demolition bid coming from the Housing Committee? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Finance Committee, Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the low bid of $77,400 from CLS Incorporated for landscaping irrigation for the Police Department project. So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Hazel, second by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I have a motion, I make a motion to approve the low bid of $98,900 from Locker and Storage Systems Incorporated for metal lockers for the Police Department project. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Yes. Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the insurance renewals as follows. Insurance Program Managers Group has health insurance third-party administrators, including their recommendations for stop-loss and aggregate carriers, and Adventia for dental and vision coverage, also approving staff's recommendation for planned changes. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the engineering scope change with Gonzalez Companies for Missionary Ventures forced main reroute. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear discussion? Yes, sir. Yes. I'd like to point out, as a member of the Sewer Committee, that this change order was still within the original budget, unless I am incorrect. Royce, you want to address anything? It did not raise one penny, correct?
The scope of the project is still within the budgeted amount. The easements were the problem, acquiring easements and the cost of the easements, and also the placement of the scope of the project changed because of the placements of some of the development that was proposed recently. So, the cost of the easements were going to cost much more than what the change to the scope of this contract would be.
And we believe, from sitting down, and I guess I just say this, if any of you have ever worked with any large development, it's unrealistic not to understand that there are moving parts and changes that come along. The developer's still looking at adding some things and tweaking some things in their wonderful plan, and it is true that we ran into a snag with acquiring what we thought originally would not be a difficult task, and we really believe that, because that's why we didn't go the actual, original plan, because we knew it was going to be more difficult to obtain all the large amount of easements. So, we went to Plan Two, and we still ran into a snag. But in the meantime, a lot of things were going on, and a lot of things were happening that we learned. What was originally thought to be some grave challenges with other utilities and fiber optics and IDOT, apparently now, at this point, is seemingly something that we can work through and makes this probably the best route that we can try to obtain. So, as the project is growing and being massaged, we believe we're on a very good course of action, and as mentioned, it's still within the original budget, and what we're asking for tonight is the fact that we've adjusted the location of this sewer, we have to re-engineer some things, and that is a part of it. But it should be a cheaper, the actual, if everything goes well, the actual construction of the sewer project should be cheaper on this route. I mean, maybe not coming any cheaper than, you know, but cheaper even with the adjustment of the $36,000 additional engineering. Is that fair to say, Royce?
It's still within the original.
Right.
Little bit.
Okay. Mr. Wiggington?
And Royce, just correct me, I'm on the Master Sewer Committee also, and doesn't this new route make it easier to work on the sewer lines in when a situation could possibly arise? It makes it more accessible, easier to work on than the other route provided?
It'd make it easier to work on, and if there had been a problem in the middle of the development, it would have been environmental nightmare to take care of, so.
Alderman Galetti.
I just wanted to reiterate that this sewer project out there is going to be one, if not the first, expenses that's paid out out of the TIF that was created.
We're going to be reimbursed by the TIF.
Right.
That's the, as we said from the very beginning, while the sewer construction fund is laying out some money now to get the sewer put in, as soon as the Hopper House and the first few places start to develop, any TIF money, our 25% that the city will receive will go for reimbursement of the sewer. Okay? We have a motion and a second on the floor, and if there's no further questions, I'll call for roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pousa. Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I make a motion to approve the postage machine contract with Walz Label and Mailing Systems. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Cybert, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby.
I make a motion to approve equipment financing with the Bank of Belleville for two, for the two thousand sixteen sanitation truck at one point seven three percent for three years. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Ovian. Do I hear discussion on this item? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Once again, Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve the investment policy changes. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall. Discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Two more.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Reliance Bank, First Bank of Dietrich, and Regent's Bank as new investment institution. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Cybert, do I hear discussion?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to abstain so I can avoid any perception of conflict of interest, even though none really exist between my firm and this deal. I'm just.
We understand. We duly noted. Roll call.
Hazel. Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Abstain.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second again by Alderman Cybert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to, from our, uh, motions from Ardenance and Legal Review Committee. Uh, we have two of them coming from the Parks Department. I, um, I'll, I'll read them if someone then cares to make the motion. We have, is there a problem reading them together?
No.
Okay. Motion to amend, I'm asking for a motion to amend Chapter thirty-one dash one dash one from Parks and Recreation to allow alcohol in Bellevue Park at Stone Lodge building only. Not in the park, but at Stone Lodge. So if they have a, uh, small little wedding reception or a, a wedding shower or something, that they could bring alcohol in there. It's been recommended by the Park Board and staff. The second motion that would be read with this is a motion to amend Chapter thirty-one dash one dash one from Parks and Recreation to change the name. We voted on this a couple weeks back, but we didn't change the ardenance. Change the name of Municipal Pool Park to Epson Park. Do I hear a motion to make those two approvals? Motion by Alderman Cincilla, second by Alderman Hazel. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Flint, how does alcohol at the Stone Lodge cover, be covered under liquor liability and dray shop?
They have to provide it.
We're not providing that.
No, they have to, they have to.
They do, we are requiring the applicant.
Even if they bring it in, you know, type thing, they have to provide it.
The applicant who's renting the facility.
Yes, that's, that's part of our, part of our, you know, they have to provide that they have dray shop. Liquor, an insurance, you know. Okay? Yes, sir.
And Mayor, will there be hours and days that will be regulated?
Well, the part, Stone Lodge is already regulated. Uh, Debbie, the hour, the, the Stone Lodge already has hours and times of regulation.
Yeah, till ten.
Yeah, till ten. And it's by scheduled appointment only, okay? So we have a motion and a second for these two recommendations coming from ardenance. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman White, Traffic Committee.
Yes, Your Honor, since all these are the same subdivision, I ask permission to read them all.
Pro K with me.
Uh, motion to approve no-through truck traffic on Commons Parkway at North Greenmount. Motion to approve no-through truck traffic on Greenmount Commons Drive at the rear of the Walmart store, and a motion to approve the no-left turn lane on Greenmount Commons Drive at the rear of the Walmart store and have the appropriate ordinances drawn.
Alderman coming, motion coming from Alderman White, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear discussion on these three recommendations from traffic? Uh, all in favor of approving these recommendations and having the proper ardenances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Streets and Grades, Mr. Cybert.
I, recommendations from the Streets and Grades and City Engineers to approve hair plumbing for the north end retaining wall in the amount of seventy-five thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So moved, John.
Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Diddleman. Uh, just real quickly, I believe the, um, Tim, I excuse this evening, had a family meeting, conflict, but I believe that the engineer's estimate was right around or over a hundred thousand, so this was a good bid. We had several bidders, and, and hair plumbing has done a lot of work for Master Sewer over the years, et cetera, so we've had good luck with them, so we, we got a good price on this. We have a motion and we have a second to approve this. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion car, uh.
Also, a motion to approve cuts activating for the Nichols Center retaining wall in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty. So moved, your honor.